... The Secretary, the Secretary for the Senate here. We have some minutes which we all took a look at this week. I was the last one, but I did take a look.
I'll move to approve the minutes from April 20th meeting.
I'll second that motion. Any further discussion on the minutes? All in favor of approving?
Aye.
Uh... Corn, still signing also?
Yeah.
We'll do it to Corn to start with. Before the non-public minutes is back in front of us right now, I think his lean gun will get them.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, it's okay. Peter Prince, how are you? I got a report from you tonight?
Yeah.
If you asked me a year, if you asked me three months ago what that was, I would say...
A lot of people think it's somebody who puts a baby carriage in it. It's a prime enabler.
That's right.
He's matched up there, he was saying that anyhow.
Okay, I'm gonna open up to, uh, we're waiting on some minutes to be approved, but they're not in front of us right now, so we're gonna defer those for a few minutes and I'll open up to public comment this time. We'll start with...
No, later, I'll talk to you later.
Okay. Sir, you're on the agenda already, I believe.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Okay. Fred?
I love you, Jenna.
Absolutely, okay. Ma'am?
What am I?
You wanna say something?
It's public comment, if you have anything to say, you can say.
Well, my name is Judy, not Nancy.
She says ma'am.
Major ma'am.
But I corrected it.
She's not old enough to be a ma'am, what's the matter?
Do I have any comments on one?
I give respect to all. Okay, uh, Woody?
Yes.
Okay.
The first thing I have is, um, looking at the shoe policy.
Yes.
And I'm just looking for clarification on one line here.
Yes.
It says that part-time employees working less than ten hours per week are authorized one pair every two years. Can you explain that to me? As far as, we have people that we can call in, are those the people you're talking about, or...
Not, those are not your regular, those are more your on-call employees.
Okay.
And the thing is, um, they're not your regular part-timers.
Okay.
And that's what it was directed to.
Okay.
Whereas your regular part-timers who basically work every week on a regular basis
are gonna wear out shoes much faster than anyone else. Right, no, I understood that, but then this next line said, "Part-timers who work less than ten hours", which would be, in my eyes, I have the guys that I can call in who work less than ten hours. I'm like, there's six guys, hundred fifty dollars a pair, that's a lot of money.
It doesn't say per week, ten hours per week?
Uh, sure, I just read it, yeah.
Yeah, but the thing is, but even those employees, we have...
Yeah, it says less than ten hours per week, well, some of them, they might only work a couple hours. So, I just was looking for clarification, so that we're not buying shoes for guys that might work one or two days a year. I just wanted clarification.
At the same time, we wanna protect the employees.
Right, no, no, and I get that, 'cause I was...
But those are, those are your on-call people.
Okay, that's what I wanted clarifying.
And those people, we said, what would be the reasonable standard, since they're working so few hours? Two years would be fine, we thought.
No, and that's what I was looking for, was for clarification, so I didn't have to, man, you know, when I come back saying, "Okay, we gotta order six pairs of boots for the guys on-call."
No.
That's what I was looking for clarification.
Is that out?
Oh, yeah, that's clear, that's what I was looking for.
Excellent. All right, anything else?
Later.
Okay. Are you doing better?
Okay.
Okay, I'll leave it at that. Chief? And we go down? Any public comment? This is public, public comment section. Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna go right back to the minutes from the, uh, non-public minutes.
Motion to approve the non-public minutes from April 20th.
I'll second that, Corn. Any discussion on these at all?
Nope, we're just cutting them off.
Okay. Yep, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Hey, Dawn, you're gonna be up in a minute? Okay, we're gonna accept some funds, I think, tonight.
Yes.
Don Larson, uh, Birchview Drive. I have, uh, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars to add to the Rees Across Dunbarton Fund. And I'd like to present it to you, thank you.
Okay. Are we all in favor of accepting? I'll make a motion that we accept the three hundred and fifty-eight dollars donated for the Rees Across Dunbarton, for the veterans.
And I'll second the motion.
In discussion, I just wanna say, it's a pleasure in accepting your money, because your coffers, I'm sure you're gonna meet your goal very soon.
Right. We've got, you know, several major events, arts on the common, I'll have it out there, I'll have, uh, the fireman's barbecue, Old Home Day, so, between now and then, and then the chili supper on the fifteenth of December.
Of December. Good work. All in favor of approving, uh, accepting the funds?
Aye.
Thank you, Don.
You're welcome.
Okay, next is, we're gonna talk about a, uh, a donation. Chief, you come on up.
Stash and Alita Zolbo have, uh, decided they wanna make a donation to the police department to purchase some computer equipment.
Well, we are grateful, that would be, that's wonderful.
We're really grateful. That is gonna make a difference to our operations, so we're very thankful.
And looking at the email, so the thing is, uh, I have a letter, I'm gonna sign a letter of thank you, but this is, this is wonderful news. I just wanna say thank you on behalf of the town of Dunbarton and all the residents, we appreciate that.
Well, we definitely support the police department, the backbone, without them, there'd be anarchy, so...
Thank you.
I have to say, it's not the first time you've made a donation and, and the police, I know, are, you know, uh, probably ecstatic with some of the contributions you've made, so it's really appreciated, you know?
We wanna feel part of the town.
And just for the, for the record, it's, uh, we're not talking about a four hundred dollar computer, we're talking about a nice computer system of about twenty-two hundred dollars, so we appreciate that. Chief, no access.
We'll do Windows-based. Well, we hope it runs for a long time.
Thank you again. Okay, uh, next up?
Uh, there's no motion there?
No, was this next, sorry, I mean, do we have the... We'll make a, we'll make a motion.
We get on the furthest ones.
Yeah. I stand corrected, let's, let's do it.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we accept the twenty-two hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-four cents from Stash and Alita Zolbo to purchase new computer installation network from the Dunbarton Police Department.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's excellent.
We have to keep Corn and Fred's on.
Fred, you just... Okay. If I go, if we go too fast, I get kicked out of the table.
Okay.
Figureatively, okay? Okay, Fred, you're out, I'm sorry.
Fred Mullin, Starkland. This year, we're doing the preamble with the town lines with the town of Hawkeston, Hookset, and Gobstown. And Lean has sent out letters to those towns to request we get together. And, uh, this afternoon, I spoke with David Pierce, a selectman of Gobstown, who's been appointed the preamble leader for Gobstown. And the date he's available is Friday, May 5th. And we're gonna be at Ware at ten o'clock in the morning. So, we're gonna, whoever wants to come will carpool here, 'cause we don't have half the town with us.
Well, you do it once, selectmen's rep will be going.
Yeah, Dave Nelson said he wanted to go, yeah. And, uh, I also, I contacted the, uh, landowners, the homeowners at 23 Ironman's Way across their property, because there are corners down there where Hookset and Gobstown is there. And they gave permission to do that. And the people I usually talk to in Ware is 308 River Road in Ware. And that's the closest, three inches of a mile from their house to the, uh, monument. And, uh, but, uh, seems like they don't have a home phone anymore, 'cause I tried calling them today and the phone's been disconnected. So, I'm gonna have to maybe go over, leave a note or something, see if they get a hold of me to get permission to park an area out again.
When we send them a letter again?
What's that?
When we send them a letter, like we did?
The one from Ware?
Yeah.
I don't think you ever did, did you?
No, I'm just, I'm saying, we can send the letter that we're conducting a preambulation and, like, permission to...
Okay.
And then have them contact you.
Okay, that'd be fine, in case I go over to their home or something, but, you know.
I can give it to you, really.
That's fine, okay.
Fred, what time you wanna meet here?
Nine o'clock. Maybe carpool and meet Dave Pierce over in Ware at, uh, ten.
Okay.
'Cause it's ten o'clock, it's a good time for him to be over there.
All right.
So, I'm estimating by the time we get to through the whole town line at the Ironman's Way, that corner may be one, two o'clock in the afternoon, so...
Who could I? Whether permitting or whether immaterial?
Well, right now, we're set to go that day.
Okay.
Did you say Hookset, Dunbarton, and Gobstown? Or did you say Hawkeston?
Hawkeston.
Okay.
Hawkeston, Hookset, and Gobstown, we're due with this year.
Any, any questions from the board to Fred? No, I think that's it, I'll be pretty good. Fred, thank you for that.
I think it's a good time, 'cause the flies are just starting to come out.
Right, they're getting hungry. The ticks are already out, this last Saturday, I ate four of them, I mean.
Well, there seem to be a lot of the small ones this year. Yeah. Okay, thank you, Fred. All right, next item on the agenda was the personnel plan, and...
Do you want to go out of order at all?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna talk about that, we're gonna banter about what's on the personnel plan. We're just talking about some changes, we're not gonna make any tonight, we're just gonna express it, so we can push that off a little bit. I'd like to move on to the town office's security firearm proposal.
Don Larson first, 'cause that's short.
Okay. Dawn and Nancy, you wanna, do you wanna...
Judy.
Judy, why isn't Nancy here?
Did I just find, I wrote it wrong this time, I'm sorry. It is Judy, I've been calling her Judy all day, I just...
So, what are we hiding, Judy?
There is a Nancy stuff in that, that's why.
All right.
Judy.
Here I am being corrected, and I feel, I feel vindicated now. Judy, and Dawn, would you like to print and tell us what was going on with the cemetery appointment?
Well, uh, we posted a public meeting for, earlier this evening, for anyone that wanted to apply. Brian Pike is the only one that has stepped up, and, uh, as we discussed last week, he has the knowledge that both Judy and I will need to draw from to finish out the one-year term, and he has agreed to that. And we'd like, uh, your approval of Brian Pike as the, to finish out the one-year term of Annette Coons on the trustees, uh, cemetery trustee board.
Okay. So, noted, Jim? Did, I just wanted to make sure you guys did contact John and talk to John.
I talked to John, and he initially was gonna come over, and then he called me up last night and said that, uh, he was withdrawing his name.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, it's his choice, I guess. Any further discussion on that?
Well, we haven't made a motion yet.
No, any further discussion before we make a motion?
Well, you have to make a motion and discuss.
But, uh, I wouldn't make one, okay. I have two, before we make the motion, I also have two other appointees who are gonna make it one motion. To, uh, as appointees to the other committees.
We want to do it separate.
Okay.
Right, that's what we've been doing, right?
Well, when I had the laundry list, I did the whole thing. But we'll do them separate, I don't have no problem doing them separate. Okay, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that we nominate Brian Pike as a member of the cemetery's trustees for the one-year period.
And I'll second that motion.
Going on the recommendation from the board.
Any further discussion on that?
No, there's a discussion. Last week, when we talked about, uh, appointees to the cemetery trustees, it was something about a, uh, alternate. So, how does an alternate visa get picked? Does it get elected?
I think, I think it's like a trustee in training, on the job training, attend the meetings, I, I'm not sure. Because that's the first I heard about it, but, uh, John said that he would not be, I was told he would not consider being an alternate.
Right, well, okay, so, with that said, though, there might be someone out there that might be interested, because just in case you have an election and you have another person that isn't familiar with the cemetery.
Right.
Uh, if you, if the person would step up now and serve as an alternate, if we could find someone. And then they decided to...
We're rough, I'm a...
Too available for cemetery.
You have, you have at least someone that's knowledgeable versus having a whole board or a whole group that has no knowledge, you know?
Being an elected board, uh, committee, I don't think you can do that, it'd be no different than, you don't have an alternate selectman. And because then an alternate would be seated as a committee member when he wasn't voted, or she wasn't voted in. That, I don't think you can do that.
Well, there is something I saw, and I only looked at it once, so you can have an alternate.
Yeah, the RSA offers for them that two alternates.
Oh, really?
So that they can learn the position, but when they go for a permanent position, they'd have to go through an election process.
Okay, so they're not, are they voting?
No.
So, I don't believe so, I just an alternate, so they can learn this process.
Someone voting on things that weren't elected into that position, you know?
Yeah, the RSA shows that they can have two, that we read last week.
Well, and that's what I, I would like them to clarify that. To know if it's, has to be voted as an alternate.
Yeah.
Or if they can be appointed as an alternate, 'cause it's, as far as I'm concerned, it's a gray area right now, 'cause they don't have any determination as to how they serve, you know?
As far as elections go, I've never seen an alternate cemetery.
No, you wouldn't be an alternate.
Be appointed.
But, from what I understand, this is new.
Right.
Because even Brian Pike wasn't aware that they had alternates, so that's...
I don't know if it's new or if nobody ever looked into the RSA showing it before, you know? They might not have ever looked at it, but maybe we can...
But it's worth, it's worth, if, if you would put your nose into that, uh, Dawn, I appreciate it.
It would create an opportunity where if someone wanted to run, they said, "I worked as, I served as an alternate", and, and he'd come into the position with knowledge as elected official. And so, it might be a win-win for the town.
Terry, Terry Knowles is the trustee of, and governs a lot of the cemetery responsibilities and trust funds and whatnot. She might be able to answer that for you. I can send her your, the information.
Yeah.
She works.
Yeah, I just read it was in the PowerPoint of the RSA, said we could have alternates.
Right, but I think Bob's question is...
Whether they get elected or they're appointed.
They're either appointed.
Right.
But I can't, I don't have that with me right now.
And then, is the appointee a voting member?
I wouldn't think so.
Those are two questions.
I wouldn't think unless they're elected, like Fred, and timeout, like Leo says.
Yeah, but the only difference is you have an alternate, so that if they don't have a full board...
Then you could vote.
Then the person ends up voting, so, I'd just like to have a clarification, you know?
Should we check with the Hampshire Municipal Association with that? Just to get some clarification for them?
Okay, well, I'm gonna bring the motion forward then, uh, we have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded. I'm gonna say all in favor of appointing Brian Pike as cemetery trustee to, to fill the term ending March 2018.
Aye.
Dawn? Aye. You have a new member on the, Dawn, you have a new member on the, uh, on your board?
Yeah. Hopefully with a password.
We also have a class we have total anyway, so they're gonna be teaching us something.
Okay, we have two other appointees for committees, I'd, uh... And we'll start with the Dunbarton Town Hall Restoration Committee, Mary Sue Bracy. And we also, um...
I'll make a motion for Mary Sue Bracy to be a member of the Dunbarton Town Hall Restoration Committee.
And I'll second that.
Discussion, I think it's routine, I have no issues with that. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Absolutely. And we are all ready, let's do the second round. I'll sign this one before I get it handed down.
I'll be seconded, Brad.
Correct.
You have the agenda, what else is on there?
Is this Louis Duhall? Yes. I'll make a motion that we, uh, accept Louis Duhall for the energy committee as a member.
That's Louis.
Oh, it's Louis? That's Louis Duhall. Louis, just asked. Louis Duhall.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
This one's for you, Bob. I think we've been, I was saying, they would have, they would have. All right, so you forgive, I'm vindicated. Okay. There was a proposal two weeks ago on the town office security firearm system to include the alarms for the garage, town garages. And as of this, as of right now, we do not have the eligible proposals to complement.
We do, actually, they're in your packet.
Okay.
But, um, I'd like to...
Table that one?
No, I'd actually like the, the selectmen to at least consider the town office, um, security fire alarm. Today's Thursday, the existing alarm's gone off three times randomly for no reason. Once, when the town clerk arrives, seven-thirty in the morning, the alarm was going off, and she was able to turn it off. And then, on Tuesday evening, uh, Tuesday during the day, it went off, and then we were at the ceremony in the, um, common here, and when I got back, they were able to turn it off. And then Allison was in a meeting Tuesday night, and the alarm was just going off randomly. So, it's not reporting to anywhere in particular, uh, because it's not connected, but I think it's important now that, more so than ever, that we take a look at the quote that we received from All-Star for the town office security alarm system. As we discussed last, two weeks ago, the installed price for the required, um, parts would be fourteen eighty-eight, with the monitoring fee of fourteen dollars a month, so an estimated 2017 monitoring would run about eighty-four dollars. Um, there's additional costs that are listed halfway down the sheet. After reviewing the design that we had looked at, we decided that we needed an extra smoke detector in the basement, and I think everyone agreed with that, and then five panic buttons, so that would, uh, adjust the quote to eighteen fifty-two. And then the question from, that we tabled was to whether we wanted to add, um, a zone two for additional monitoring and four door contact switches, so overall, the... You should all have that in your packet, no?
Oh, am I reading, huh?
Yeah, I think you do. Uh, so if...
I'm looking, I'm looking at it, and, uh, I was okay with the eighteen fifty-two we had discussed last time, and possibly with teen motion detectors, but I think with the motion detectors, we didn't really need to have all these four contact door switches, so that seven people had to punch the code on them.
Now, the only thing we're gonna take off is the motion detectors, it's redundant. Because if they broke through the window, for example, they're gonna get picked up by the motion detector.
But we talked about that last week, like, the motion detectors, one would be here and one would be in the other hallway, and that would take care of, so the door contact wouldn't be needed at all for it.
Thank you.
We really have to retrain.
I don't think, I don't think that you can set the motion detectors in this park without having the doors.
He said, I thought he said we could, yeah. Yeah.
They were done now.
So, they, oh, it would take two hundred dollars off the price, that's another thing. So, what's twenty-two eighty-six minus three ninety-six here?
It'll be a tw- two thousand ninety dollars. And that would be with no door switches.
Because, as we said, they're gonna break in, they're gonna break into the...
I guess he disagreed, but, but, he said that the first area that they try to break into is the hallway, but...
But it's still gonna be covered for them all.
The motion will still cover them, so the line will block, so that's what we...
Yeah, and then I did double-check with him, and they, those can be programmed, so that they're only turned on at a certain time and then shut off at a certain time, so there's no real setting required to turn them on and off. And then by the individuals who work in the office, aware that if the light is turning, is, uh, flashing a certain color, that they would have to turn it off.
Now, that, that would take care of the town offices, town office, what about the garage now?
We're, we're... We wanted to have time to review that next week, maybe. You think that would be all right, Bob, what do you think about that?
It's, uh...
Wait till next week for the town garage, or...
For the garage, yeah.
These are all stapled together, they're highlighted, and those came in today fresh. Keep in mind, too, that originally, we were working with these quotes from 2016.
Right.
Um, he did say that after what, he, he did a recalculation to double-check on the equipment, and this original quote from 2016 has gone up an additional, the thirty-four sixty-four has gone up by an additional two hundred dollars from the 2016 quote.
And we only have one electrical bolt so far.
Yeah, there are two different options, that's correct, they...
Two different sections, is what you're...
Correct, one is to do the work that, to install this, um...
Exit devices, and one's to do the lighting.
Correct.
And we expect to have another one.
Well, we had told them to try and get us three, right?
We have two, we had gotten, um, one from Dar electric, which came in at, well, here, it's at forty-seven, I think it was over six, that we got for the first quote.
So, can we table that section to review next week?
In the meantime, we'll try to get another quote on, because I'll have to get them down there and look at the...
We need that for a little bit longer, we have another one to look at.
We have two. All right, so that will table.
So, uh, well, I, I have a motion, if we're gonna rate to at least move on on one, on the security, town office security alarm system and firearms.
I can try that, and, uh, we'll see how we make out, let's see. I'll make a motion that we accept the written quote from All-Star Security Systems on the Dunbarton Town Office Security Alarm System for a total of two thousand ninety dollars even. And that's including doing the selectmen, town administrators' office, um, with the one extra smoke in the basement, and the five panic buttons throughout the building, and the two motion detectors on this end of the building.
We'll second that. Any further discussion on this? I think it's overdue, and we're ready to move on to...
Yeah, at least we'll get this... Yeah, at least we'll get this one stuff done, like, well, I said sooner or later we'll get some of this stuff over.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's good.
And I'll review the other quotes here.
The other thing is I don't have to let the other one go. Was it in last week?
Yes, it was in last week.
Okay.
Okay.
Excellent.
Okay. Let's go through some of the, I guess, the work, the town business now.
Yes.
There was one email that we all received, I just wanna, it was in reference to a gathering of public service people. That needs to be forwarded to the town road agent. There's a gathering of, it's free to him, it's sent on email, it was just sent this afternoon.
Did I send it to you, or did it come from someone else?
No, I think it came from somebody else.
Okay, and I'll forward it to you.
It looks like it's a exposition of...
Large trucks, it's a jamboree.
Yeah, isn't that the, is that the one we're talking about at the library, the toucher truck?
Yes.
Cause I got an email.
No, no. This is like a huge gathering of vendors where they're gonna show their wares.
I did not receive that.
Okay, I will forward that to you, and so it can be forwarded to the appropriate person.
Yep.
But it looked like it was free to the town officials, and specifically targeted the road agents. Okay, and we have a new public administration program about, talking about some community outreach and public relations initiatives, and I think it's, how many could this be? Because I read this, and I think it talks, they're gonna have outreach initiatives, particularly with New Hampshire's immigrant refugee population, and how appropriate. Because I think at the same time, we're talking about this crowdfunding campaign with refugee farmland in Dunbar here.
Yep.
So the thing is, they're not related, but they are related.
Yep, is this all from the mailbox, or?
Yes.
Do you think I should put that on the website?
I think you should.
I don't think that it's specific to town officials, it just...
We've got RSVP to it, right?
In fact, I think it's, New Hampshire State Police's facility and, I think maybe someone from the police department, maybe chief should add this to forward to information.
Yep.
Did you, you saw that too?
Oh, I go out and see.
Yeah.
You guys would feel okay if I put that attachment, add on the hot topic?
I have no issue with that, because there may be other people in town interested in that.
Yep.
And then in the mailbox, we got some, Leo, this is something that you brought up, that was probably in an article that was in the paper, but it talks about the crowdfunding campaign, preserve refugee work farmland, specifically, they're talking about the farm in Dunbar.
It was an article in the New Coke Monitor.
Right. So I don't know if we can put that on the website so people can hear and see about it. But the thing is, is that article copyrighted?
I don't know.
I was hoping Judy was still here, because it talks about the stone farm work area, so I wasn't aware that they were doing that.
Yep.
That's interesting reading.
Yeah, it's not the stone farm per se.
No.
Jimmy Stone and Judy and Martha Hammond donated some land, or they sold it very, very cheap, town office story hill road.
Oh, okay.
And Clinton's, Route 13.
Oh, that's that field off to the right when you go down, okay.
Cause I've been through there with Jimmy when he was alive.
Yeah.
And they were farming down in there.
Okay, I didn't know where it was, I, sounded like it was their farm from reading this, but now that makes sense.
Yeah, and I think that's where the confusion is, because it's stones.
Yeah, alright.
It looks like this corporation, the Organization for Refugee and Immigrant Success, they're gonna manage the property.
I don't think it's changed hands, they're just, right now, currently just leasing it or using it. But this is a project that they're working towards.
Leo, I'm sorry, is this a non-tax status or anything for the property? I don't think we have any more information at this point.
If they, right now, it's in current use status.
So it's minor.
Minor, yeah, but if they develop it or put structures on it, those will be taxable.
Leo, the fact you brought it up last week, I, you may wanna check it out before you leave. I'll leave the article so you can read it before you go on.
Sure. Thank you.
It goes with the chief. Okay. Alright, then we have, that's an old one, just to let everyone know that we have elections coming up, and we're gonna have a short meeting with the town moderator and the town clerk on May 11th as part of our meeting to talk about the upcoming elections. We have essentially three candidates filed already, four candidates filed already, and it's gonna be a small primary election held June 16th, and the special election will be held July 25th. So that goes on the agenda for May 11th.
I already have it.
Okay. And then I have a concern, a letter of concern from one of the town resident referencing the border of the cemetery, it needs to be leased up as far as trash and brush, and this needs to be passed on.
I wish we had brought that up.
I know, here.
They actually have the original copy, I, because it's CC to both of you, I gave them the original and for their mail to read into their minutes today.
Okay, so they already have that?
They already have a copy.
Okay, good.
And they were made aware that the mowing and all that needed to be put out the bin, they would need to check into whether the past bid contract has expired, and I gave them a bid packet earlier.
Dunbar and Police Department also has a training opportunity for the general public. It's survey and response to an active shooter scenario. I'm sure it's on their website, please check and make sure it's on their website, maybe we'll make a link to their website.
He has asked me to post it on a hot topic, so I just wanted to give you that as an FYI. And then he will also be conducting a more private class exactly like that for town employees. So this one is for anyone that signs up, limit is 40, and I'll be posting it on the website, and then we'll have another one for the town employees that they're interested in attending.
Excellent. We have a right to know request?
Just general public information.
Okay, just general public. Yep, okay. That's gonna be processed by the town mayor, I hope.
Yeah, it's already done.
Okay.
Do you want me to put anything else, just the weather, right to know?
Yeah, that's all, that's all that's needed. And then we have a, some income estimates.
Yep, this week, or this time period is when we gather all the new property assessments, property values that will increase or decrease our tax revenue. And the assessors have been in the office for the last three and four weeks, entering data which we then transcribe into our tax program. And we have an overall, just over 3 million in new property assessments, which equates to about 72,000 in property tax revenue.
So it's an FYI.
Yep. This is information that is usually shared with the board of assessors, because that's their responsibility, they sign the warrant that I create, but it's very informational for the selectmen because you've set the tax rate, and it's nice to know what we can anticipate for additional...
Do we have a copy of that in our email?
I don't send it by email, but I can do that.
Or if, I just wanna put a copy in my basket, just so I'll have it to refer to.
Yep, absolutely, yep.
Okay, and the next, I'm gonna go back to personal plan, just to very quickly talk about that. There's a section in there, I made a copy, sorry, everybody.
You did?
I did. Basically, it talks about performance appraisals, this is a section, the one, the one section talks about performance appraisals.
Oh, we're gonna go on to a new section, we're gonna go on to the vacation part?
Well, we're gonna get there, too.
Okay.
I just picked up one section that was blocking me. I guess chairman's prerogative.
Look at this for next week?
Yes. And the thing is, and there's another section in there, there's a one sentence section in there which says essentially that we will conduct the annual appraisals, and that's all it says. No guidance of when, how, or do we do it? So I spot checked two employees this week, and I asked them, have you ever received an annual appraisal? I've been here seven years, I never got an appraisal. And so the question is, do we embrace appraisals, or do we not embrace them? And do we take, put them in a personal plan, or do we take them on a personal plan? I'm pretty thinking here, I think appraisals have pros and cons, it's very subjective. And however, if we wanna document good performance, it's a way of doing it, it's also a mechanism documenting poor performance, especially if we want the employee to improve, or we have to take actions to terminate the employee. And it's hard to do it without evidence, and appraisals is another mechanism of pain in evidence. So I leave that out there for discussion, and I'd like to have a look at that in the section, and we'll talk about that section of the personal plan, but obviously, we haven't been doing it.
It's unusual, because most places that use performance do it once a year. And they usually have it right around their anniversary time, so, you know, it might be something to look at.
Yeah, and if we, if we did something, I'm gonna pull this up to you, this is just my, this is just the freeware, a very common performance review evaluation.
I do have numerous forms that I've shared with other departments, so that they can work with their team as they, you know...
But the thing is, if we're gonna have it in the plan, we're gonna have it, or we're gonna eliminate it.
Lee, can you provide us with some of them, so we can kinda combine them?
Absolutely, yep.
Okay.
Cause you don't have an extra one of that, do you?
I do.
Where'd you get this, like, off the internet?
I sure did. And it's free.
It's from the city of something.
Middle of the country.
And so that forsch, it sounds expensive.
This is actually, this is actually nice, because it's one sheet, and it's...
You don't wanna make it so complicated.
The ones I have are two and three pages long, they're very lengthy.
If you make it too complicated, people aren't gonna wanna do it. Alright, and the other thing was the language on the spreadsheet. And I was, I read it three times, and I think I, I'm gonna give you my interpretation of it, and tell me if I'm wrong.
And that's what comes out of the personnel form. The language at the top.
Right.
Is in the personnel.
Yeah, which is where I read it today, I just pulled it up.
Yep.
Okay. After I've read it twice and three times, I understand it now.
I do, too.
Yeah.
I don't think the wording needs to be changed.
You just gotta exit out a little bit.
On your fifth year, you do get that.
But...
It's during your fifth year, it's not after.
Well, but if you read that last sentence, upon completion, come the year after your initial year, which employees has hired, will be credited with annually, with each successive January 1st for use in the following year based on the following schedule.
Right, so if you look at the following schedule in your fifth year, you're allotted, how many, 20 hours? In your fifth year, you're allotted 20, 120 hours, I'm sorry, in your fifth year. Okay, so if you read that on the January 1st of each consecutive year, so your first January is the only one you wait for, after that, it's every January after that. So it's, in your fifth year, you get your 120 hours.
Technically, although it's confusing what it is, and if you don't have a large workforce.
Right.
Is their anniversary date should be the date that triggers everything, because what I did is I did some crawling around. And everybody uses the anniversary date as the date the person receives at, rather than, you know, just using arbitrarily January 1st. Now, I understand that it's use it or lose it, but that happens between the time you get your vacation to your anniversary date, if you haven't used it by your anniversary date, that part of it's gone. Going forward, you have your new vacation time. So it wouldn't make a difference if you use January 1st for everyone or their anniversary date, other than the person would have their time in to qualify for the vacation time.
In your fifth year, just for an example, in your fifth year, after January 1st, the year, you know, the year before that, in your fifth year, you would get to use your 120 hours during that year. If you do it on the anniversary date, say your anniversary date's in October, you could use only two weeks, and then after October, you could use your third week. I don't think it's written that way, I think it's written, so after, in your fifth year on January, you get to use all three weeks whenever you want.
Well, actually, if you're in your fourth year, between your anniversary day and your fourth year.
That's right.
Before you get that third week, that doesn't happen until after your fifth year.
Which is...
So they would, supposing they had, excuse me, 80 hours, by their anniversary date, if they haven't used it, they've lost that time. Going forward, on their fifth year, after their anniversary date.
They get the third.
They get the, they get the three weeks, so then they go into their three weeks. You lose that time if you don't use it before your anniversary mark. Which doesn't make any difference than if they had January 1st, except arbitrarily, it works out right for a person that's hired in December or January, there's their anniversary year. But for a guy hired in June, there's some complications.
What, how do we need to change it, or do we need to change it? The way I read it is after you, for each consecutive January, say you're in your fifth year, so between your fifth year and your fifth year, after your fourth year, you're gonna hit January. So say it's October of your fourth year, when it hits January, you're in your fifth year, and I read that, that you're allotted the 120 hours starting with January before them, not after you've completed them, because you're in your fifth year.
That's right, you'd be five-year October 1st.
Right.
And then you're starting January 1st for a new calendar year, but you've hit your five-year mark in October.
So what happens for those three months, from October to December?
Then you're allowed that additional week.
So you're saying...
See, they're using, and correct me if I'm wrong, the selectmen in the past always use January 1st as a drop dead date, because you're going into a whole new budget, a whole new budget period.
Yep.
However, it really doesn't make any difference if you allow for it, for the person, when you're budgeting that money, because they have that time coming to them.
Right.
You know it's gonna come up in that time period. January 1st is when everyone lost their time, regardless of what your anniversary date was. Cause they tried to make everything fit into the budget period.
I don't think we're ready to do anything with it right now.
Nope.
I'm gonna, let's, let's table this for one other week and come back to it.
Okay, just think about what I'm saying.
I, I just, I'm still having a hard time.
Well, that's where I was originally going, but when you keep reading this, I think it's covered.
It covers, it starts January 1st, of fall in your anniversary. So that October, October to December, the way it's written, October to December, you get nothing. You have to wait till that January to roll around, then you start your, your fifth year.
Because, and again, because they're using a budget year.
Right, but do we, do we have to use the budget year? I think, I think they have an anniversary year.
If you use the anniversary year, it makes no difference, because you're allowing for it in the following budget. I called a bunch of places that are...
Let's see, I think we're confusing.
Where their employees are, you know, public employees.
Each successive January 1st.
And they all use the anniversary year, where the person who's hired is their anniversary year.
January that allows you to have that in the fifth year.
So you budget it for the whole year?
That's right, the whole fifth year, you can use that, the way I read that, because it's each success of January 1st.
That's how you're saying it, too?
Yep.
I can, I can live with that.
So during that whole fifth year, you can use your 120 hours.
As you've already budgeted for.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
I agree, but it's not clear, is what I'm getting at.
That's, that's...
So maybe, instead of changing any of this, we put a state, a sentence right after the whole period, not trying to change it.
Yep.
Allowed to be used during the fifth year, or whatever year, 10th year.
During, the year you, your anniversary year, this year you can use, regard, I mean, he may have four years and 11 months, but he can use his fifth year right there. Because it's a budget for the anniversary year, that's what you're saying, that's what I'm saying. Are we agreement there?
Yeah, but you may wanna think about how you wanna write.
Oh, I know, I know, during the week. Alright, in other words, they've been using it during that fifth year, we wanna continue that policy. We don't wanna make them work till sixth year, in other words.
Right, because then it should be changed, to say you can use your three weeks in the sixth year. I mean, it would be a lot easier to word it that way, if you, you've earned three weeks, but you get your third week in your sixth year.
Yeah, but it's not, it's actually during the fifth year, we wanna do it to them, so we'll do it.
Yeah, but it's not, it's actually during the fifth year, we want to do it to them, so we'll do it. I don't think we'll change any of that. We just add a sentence to clarify it. And we'll have those sentences next week. Yep.
Okay.
Because I read it too, and I couldn't see what we wanted to change that. Thank you. Because the other thing is, it states that you can't go beyond vacation hours over unless it's approved.
Yeah, and it's...
By the selectmen, and you have to notify them on December first for that, so I didn't really want to change that part either. Okay, my, my head hurts. Next. Okay.
Thanks more copies. Thanks more copies.
All right. And it was also brought up, one thing that, Bob was brought up to me, and we're trying to find out where it was in the personnel manual, is that we looked at pay raises and I talked about evaluations. And there's no mechanism in the personnel manual for pay raises for merit. And many other communities look at, you do a good job, there's an avenue to, where you excel at your job, you can get a merit pay raise. We don't have that. So I'm gonna ask, be thinking of that concept. And the other concept is, well, how else do you get the pay raises? Well, we have tenure, or shall we say we have step increases. And we, those have been implemented and they seem very reasonable. However, along with the step increases, we also have, the other way of getting the pay raises is CPI. And I think CPI, we're kinda like, we were forced this year that we mandated that we use it. I'd like to at least consider a motion next week, that we, or come up with some verbiage, that we use CPI in the future as a guideline. That we, we use it as a guideline, we can, we may use it as a guideline.
Hey, use the word may.
Okay?
I will get the meeting minutes of the selectmen so that you know when it was adopted, because it was a motion that was, and the thing is, the selectmen, I think, can't tie the hands of a board, future board. So the word may would give you the tool to use it as a guideline, but not...
Either or, and you know, and I'll use, the last two years, unfortunately, town employees, you know, if they compare themselves to another part of the town, which is covered by a different board, they, they didn't receive much of a raise. Maybe, since some people might think, you know, 0.7% was a lot, but it is very little. And when you're looking at what the average wage increase has been, it's been tracking near the 2%, 1% to 2%. So at the very least, would have been nice if the CPI was 0.8 or 0.7, which it's been in the past. At least they got a 1% raise. It's not a whole lot of difference, but it makes a difference to a person, I think, a little bit. And so I went last night, I was, because I still tinker with the US Department of Labor site. So I looked at what the CPI was for this, because they'll use December of this past year, which was 1.1%. That's fairly good, but right now, which they're tracking the CPI, and for this year, as of March, it's 1.3%. But projected that it may be closer to 2.3 to 2.8%. So you're getting closer to a 3% raise, but what happens if it goes, because it can go crazy. You know, and that's what I'm concerned with. If it go, if we tie our hands and say, shall use the CPI, and it ends up being, which we've had years where it's 7.5, 8.5%.
The budget budget.
You know, you're gonna have people at town meetings, they're gonna be real upset when they see that type of wage increase. So a nominal wage increase, I think, isn't problematic, but not, having our hands tied so it's out of control is problematic, or too low for what we try to do.
And it was more work to put a 0.7%.
That's a very complicated, a fraction is difficult to implement.
So maybe next week, we can talk about language, we just want to see what the actual motion was.
Yep.
No, we should tell them what CPI stands for, so they... Consumer Price Index.
Consumer Price Index.
I just figured we should say that because...
But of course, it's a lot better than some of our retirees get a COLA, which is a cost of living adjustment, which was next almost minus.
It was minus one year. And when it's minus, they don't do anything. So we'd like to get that at least ironed out before we even talk about the budget for next year.
Yep.
But we don't want to go in and have to change things at the last minute.
Talking the original motion.
But, so we're not jumping around so much. Take the time to read the personnel plan and make changes that you'd like to see implemented. And then we can come back to that in June and decide on some of the things we want to see changed. Rather than every week, bring up one sentence that you want to change, award in or whatever.
Because what happens is, I've got my draft, and I'm not gonna change my draft because there's reference of old information, but this is what my personnel plan looks like.
I'd say we could, we could come up, we could come up with a record.
Only because I need to make sure that I'm, I'm not losing information that was original. And that, it, it just, I have your idea about...
We like to target all the changes at one time.
Because some of the stuff, you know...
We could do a workshop and...
The medical leave act and stuff, a lot of that stuff's boilerplate, so you're not gonna change much of that.
That's right.
But there are things that actually affect people. You may be talking about merit pay, there's another way they do, they show a reward for someone that's, you know, had a pretty good work performance. So there's different ways of doing those, but we can come together in June at some time and, you know, rather than just every week, looking for a line to change.
We can definitely, definitely sound like a plan. But the thing is, we, you gotta read it. I've read it once, I've read it twice, and I get lost, and sometimes I'm saying, why is that sentence even in there? So sometimes it doesn't make sense. All right, so let's move on with the agenda here tonight. All right, we have a non-public session, we're gonna wait on that. We're gonna do a public comment, then we're gonna open up to a non-public.
Can I just...
Boy, could you guys do it?
Yes. Go ahead.
I just have one item to bring before the board. I'm requesting to go train for a day with BMSI, have some program, software program that I like ironed out. I'm looking to develop a position in my office that will incorporate, that I'm hoping my training will, I'll be able to incorporate it into the job description along with the HR combination, trying to work something out there.
That's your current software program you're using now?
Yep, yep.
And it's, how would you describe it, is challenging?
It's, because it's emerging software and each department, we have accounts table, we have a fund accounting department, and we have taxes, all the three programs talk to each other. So there's a lot of steps that I need to get clarified in writing so that I can come up with some kind of procedural directions that would help guide the next person.
To one day?
One day, yep, next week, I'd like to do that next Wednesday.
As long as I've covered you enough, this will be good.
Yeah, so it'll be good.
And for any other questions?
And I'm willing to drive to Bethlehem to do that, so get one-on-one.
Oh, sure, in the summertime, and it's nice.
I don't think we need to make a motion on that, this is training.
It is training.
Yeah.
Okay, that's an FYI, and I won't call it. Okay, I'm gonna go around the table, Bob to you.
Well, okay, I do have one thing.
Okay.
So if you get a chance, can you find out from the municipal association what other towns use for health insurance, so we can start to get some of those people in here now to get quotes or an idea of what price is, you know, so we're not just, you know...
I think that survey that I've given you guys all permission to log into, to review different things, that data for the hourly wage, wage report, also includes the health benefits, so there's, there are resources that I can pull up. And then even the company that we, that represents us, actually offers different plans. It's not necessarily just Blue Cross Blue Shield, there are other companies within that umbrella.
Right, and we're in a, we're in a assigned risk pool.
A pool, yep.
But I'm just wondering what else is out there, so that we can get, you know, quotes or whatever that... Because it seems like every year, where at the, you gotta take it, because...
No, I have a reminder in my calendar now that we invite the current provider and ask her to bring to the table other options for...
Is it independent agent?
Well, they typically work for municipalities and government. Because they work with such a large number of employees or, or patients, let's say, they can get the best prices, because I have...
So what I'm saying is, they shop up, they don't, they're not tied to one company?
No, there's multiple companies underneath there, so I can do that. I'm not sure if I'll get it for next week, but I'll definitely work on that.
Okay.
Well, yeah, it's just that we have them before, we're in a drop dead date where we gotta sign.
Absolutely, yep, yep.
Or there's a, you know, a break. That's good for now.
I'm good.
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything for the group?
No, I do not.
Okay. How's the speed tonight?
Just fine, sir.
Okay. I get yelled at if I go too fast. Okay, go back to the public now. And can I see over there?
Nothing.
Anything, sir? You said you had something else?
Yes, I do, I have a couple things, and more of its clarification.
Okay.
When a position comes open on a committee or a board or whatever, how is that advertised? And we're going, it bothers me a little bit that, I mean, Brian was appointed to cemetery again after the voters made it pretty clear they didn't want him on there. A two-to-one vote to me is pretty clear, they don't want you on there. So I'm just curious how someone else would be able to get on these committees and boards? How does the, how does the public get notified that there's a position open? I'm just curious, because I don't, I honestly don't know.
Well, we've been trying to put him on the website, I think. In fact, John Trotter came in last week with his wife, Deb Trotter introduced herself as a liaison between the school board and us. And he's gonna write a letter that we can add to our Dunbar website. So Linda Peters has given us other, other areas in the town, department heads that need board members. And so we're gonna try and list them on the website from now on, so people can become aware of them. Because I don't know if they'd have any way other than word of mouth before that.
Right.
And that's why we're gonna try and do something with the cemetery trustees, because we come into a situation where, you know, nobody knew the computer systems or how to, you know, sell plots or allow people to, you know, buy plots. And so we're trying to avoid that in the future here. Hopefully, we get some alternatives on it, like Bob suggested and I suggested last week. But that's, that's how we're gonna try and put it forward. Maybe we can actually put a notice here on the town board, which I don't think we've done yet.
We always, for...
Positions open within the town. On boards.
Yeah, if we have, if we put it on Hot Topics, it gets put on the board.
Okay.
Was we done it for planning board and we did it for...
Like I said, I mean, just because I work for the town doesn't mean I know what's going on in there.
So anyway, to fill you in, and while there was some discussion here, John Hurley had come to us, not last week, the week before, with a letter in the mailbox to be appointed on the cemetery trustees. And in our meeting last week, we found out that Don Larson wasn't aware of the letter. And so we asked them, we did not nominate Brian Pike last week, because we wanted to give them a chance to talk with John Hurley, because he had made a request to be on the board. And because nobody has any background on that board, they're all fairly new members, they thought it'd be best that Brian Pike was on that board because he had the background. And Don came to us last week, and we made them wait an additional week to see if they could talk with John Hurley and... And if any other candidate surfaced.
But just to give you a little history, and you probably know this anyways, because you've been at some of the meetings, is in the past, we had that vacancy on the cemetery trustee. And we couldn't find anyone to fill it until Don Larson started his reach across Dunbar. And so then he became, his interest was big, and he figured it would do him good to get on as a cemetery trustee. So with that, it would have been difficult to find someone. They went, Judy and Don went looking for someone ahead of time. They asked Brian, he said he'd get back to them. In the meantime, just as he got back to them and they were gonna nominate him, is when John Hurley, and they found out about the letter. So they tried to create a situation where they could interview people, I think they, did they have this special meeting?
Yeah, they said tonight they did, actually, it was today. So we, we made sure they had a public meeting to talk about it, but I guess John, John stepped down from then because we wanted at least give them a chance to talk with them about being on there. And that's, that's one of the things, when we first came on, we both, we all wanted to know what's vacant in town. And put it out there so we can get some, not new blood, but just, if anyone's interested in volunteering, helping these committees, we wanted them, how do they get, find out about it? The website's probably our only thing we have, and people come up to the board and board too, but the website's probably the easiest thing. And so we're starting to, we're wanting to embrace that. So last week, as I said, we asked John, if he wants to fill his vacancies for his alternates on the ZBA, he needs to let us know and draft something that is what he's looking for, and we can put it out there for him. But we also think it's a little bit incumbent upon the chairmans of each of these committees to let us know. We're not mind readers, if you gotta, they know an upcoming vacancy, they gotta let us know. And we'll, we'll act on their behalf of them to help them out.
Good, I'm glad to see you taking a step forward. Because like I said, I, I've been here for many years, twenty-seven odd years, and I still don't know how this all come about. I don't pay a lot, just because you work for the town doesn't necessarily mean you...
Well, I'm still trying to figure out why I get the zoning board, I was asked to be on the zoning board. I'm still trying to figure that out years ago.
Your wife's idea.
Just for history though, in the past, it was one or two of the selectmen that helped the town clerk during that week where you can sign up and come to the last day when they had vacancies. Linda and that selectman would contact people then that they could think of that might be interested to get them to sign up.
Yeah, hopefully, we're not doing it at the last minute. Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. I thought I just pissed off the building inspector. I was building my, I was just beginning to get my certificate of occupancy. And not more than three months later, I get asked to, you wanna come on the zoning board, you asked a lot of questions. Okay, that's it.
And just the last thing, I don't know, maybe there must have been, from what I saw on the website, I listened to about the last, I don't know, half hour, one of the meetings last week, or beginning, or I think it was in the beginning of the meeting, and I shut it off.
Oh, come on, it wasn't that bad, was it?
I get tired of listening to it, I have other things to do. But I listened to Jeff, and I was concerned that Jeff is just finding out now the length of time that I'm gonna be out, that potential length of time, when the town is known for a long time. And that's what I got off the website, so I was just kinda curious, is that correct or is that not correct?
No, that's not.
Because that's what it says on the thing, that, that he was finding out that, that he was, he found out...
Well, he did ask us last week for clarification on how long he would be...
Right, so that, did he just find out about that, or is he known for a while?
No, no.
Okay, that's kinda the way I took it off, and I'm like, wow, they known for a while, so I'm gonna be out for a while.
That what he didn't know was when he went to go to work on Monday, and his worker said, oh, I got a call from Woody saying I have to go pick up trash. Well, Jeff didn't know that there was going to be a pickup at that point. They're trying to work out... See, Jeff, Jeff schedules Pete's work for the week.
Right.
So because Pete was contacted directly, Jeff wasn't aware.
He didn't pick up any trash on a Monday.
He was, it was Monday or Tuesday, I don't know what day it was.
Well, it's just, we, one is, the whole purpose is to establish a chain, so, so the thing is, all, all requests for assistance to the highway department goes through Jeff, so he can plan his work with his staff appropriately. That's, that's all it was, he was concerned about that.
Okay, I just, I also wanted to make sure that he was informed, because like I said, I informed the town months ago, and the way I heard it on there, I was like, oh, so he's just finding out.
Basically, I alluded to what you shared with me, and the thing is, it's really indeterminate at this point. And we're gonna leave it at that.
Right, I mean, Jeff was real supportive last year.
Yep, and he said he wants to...
I don't wanna burn that bridge with him, but...
Oh, no, no.
Holy crap, Woody's just telling me now, or just finding out now?
No.
That's the way I kinda interpreted it off the thin of it, like, hey, he's very supportive.
He did a good, he made it work last year, he'd like to do it the same.
Right, so, you know, and I appreciate his, him and his crew helping me out, you know, so I didn't wanna burn that bridge.
No, and they like the overtime too.
That's good.
And a little bit of incentive.
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead.
A lot of times, Fred Mullin, a lot of times when I come in, I move furniture away from that quilt. And it looks like right now, the copy machine's up against it.
It's gonna be...
Ladies in town put a lot of work into that, and I hate to see it get destroyed or, and or the sun faded. Because the sun, the setting sun comes over here, let's be right over here. I would like to see that thing moved to the left-hand side of the clock, hung there and put those pictures on this side. So that with there in that corner is gonna be more protected.
Yep, could do that. I'm not gonna get up there, but we can work on trying to get some of it moving.
Yeah.
I think at one point, Allison was looking into prices to get it framed, so it's protected with like a plexiglass front and framed.
There's, I gave her some information, I had one time trying to do the range flags. And there was something about, you can't put plexiglass in it because it gives off a fumes.
Oh.
But there's a certain way or something, you could do it. You couldn't put glass because it'd be too... But there's a certain way or something you could do it. You couldn't put glass, because it'd be too big, too heavy.
Yeah.
You know, so I gave her some, from the mills down there, um Lawrence Lowell, Lowell, I guess, that restores flags and stuff.
Yep.
That we got years ago, and uh, you know, I, I like to see it get protected, I mean, because it's often a lot of work.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything with poly, uh, polypropylene, uh is, is uh absorbs UV light, so that would, I mean, there are plastics out there that are specifically designed to absorb UV light.
Yeah.
And they keep it from.
I'll ask Allison to reach out to you again, because she was looking at something that involved.
Yeah, I sent her all the information I had. I don't think I gathered anymore, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to see it put over there.
And uh, I have a deal for you on the uh copy machine, if you wanna talk to me afterwards.
I, I actually have that scheduled tomorrow, you know.
Is that a board?
Steve, Steve.
It's, we're gonna, we're gonna try to recoup some money for the town. It's gonna go to the state auction.
Okay.
That's part of me. Yeah, right. We do the get the bill.
Chief, do you have anything for the group?
Just for Dave, uh we postponed that training.
Oh, you did?
A week, so it won't be the sixth, it's gonna be the following Thursday.
Okay. Which training is this?
Thirteen. Uh it's our monthly training.
Okay. We, we, you walked out, we, we talked about the training that you, for the public, the shooter situation. It's gonna be posted on the website.
Okay.
Hot topics. Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, May eleventh.
Okay. Lee, you're last tonight.
Okay, Lee Martel. For lean, I have a question.
I did get the.
No. I don't have to worry about it, I just wanna know, is the water on outdoors?
Oh, you know, I don't know if we turned it on yet.
Okay, I just, tonight, if you were here, you were here, I was, I just got a permission from the cemetery trustees to co- uh to clean a few stones, selective stones, and I'm gonna need water.
Okay, I'll make sure to turn it on.
Because it'll probably happen on a Sunday, so.
You don't wanna call me on a Sunday, right?
Well, I don't wanna bother anybody on a Sunday. Um and then I was here uh probably two weeks ago doing some work outside, outside there, but I had to plug in way over there to work way over there. There were no outlets out here. That's kinda strange. You know, I thought, I drove by originally and saw, saw a boxy, and I assumed it was a box for an outlet. So I brought one extension cord, and when I got here, I realized, I found out it was a switch. But the only outlet on the building is over, on that end, on thirteen end. So I had to set all my coveragey tools way down there, make my cuts, come over here, work, go back over there, make the cuts, you know? So.
Was it work for the town, I hope?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
Yes, it was.
Is there something downstairs where the oil tanks are?
Well, the door is locked.
Yeah, they're locked.
And nobody wants, nobody trusts me with the combinations on those.
Obviously, the panels right there could easily.
So, okay, so I just thought I'd bring you.
Okay.
You know, make that, and make you aware of it. The other thing while I was here was, the boiler kept going on and off.
You sure it was the boiler and not the sump pump?
Hmm, it sounded like, I could hear sounds coming out of the chimney, you know, the sound. And I was wondering, can you put it, can we put it programmable?
We do, and it's actually, it's, it's programmed to shut off, um like in the evening hours.
Oh, right, because it was going on and off. You know, it'd go on for quite a bit of time, then it'd shut down. Then it'd kick in again.
I'll have, um.
You know, so.
Look at the, the setting, cause then we have it programmed to turn off, so we can't turn it on.
Yeah, I, you know, I thought, just thought, it didn't know if you had one or none, I thought, well, it's a good idea if they do have one, because on weekends, nobody's here. You know, so we're heating the building at top.
Yeah, I think, I thought JR, when he set it in, that he turned it so it'd shut off on the weekends, but I'll have him double check the program.
So just, just bring you up to that.
Can we live with a bit of power outage in the time clock?
Put it, right, put it, trip that and change it, yeah. Um and then one more thing, I gotta ask the board for permission from the uh, you know, the, I'm on the uh historical awareness committee. And we're looking to, if we can get permission to take that, World War One battalion photo, we wanna copy it. Make a copy of it. And we don't wanna use that originally, we wanna make a copy of it, and so we can share it with the school, the kids in school. Because uh this being the anniversary of World War One this year.
Hundredth anniversary.
Yep, we figured we could uh do something with the kids on that, if we can, we, we figured we could use that.
I have no problem.
If, if you guys are able to, our cost, we would pay to have it copied and everything, you know?
I have no problem with that, at least. Are you gonna be doing it yourself, bringing it down?
No. Donna Dunn's very good with that stuff.
Okay.
Is that World War One music?
Yes, yeah, she's, Donna Dunn, you know, take care of that, because she, she's very knowledgeable with all that stuff. So she knows how to deal with it, treat it and everything.
Just add, they're taking it to a place that deals with that kinda thing.
Right.
So there's nobody is tampering with it.
Yeah, we're not just bringing it to concrete cameras or something like that.
An expertise, because again, it's, it's, it's a nice, nice photo.
Make a motion that I, that uh he be allowed to, you know, remove the picture from the premises, copy it, and then return.
I don't know if a motion's needed, but consensus of the board is, would be adequate for you guys to say.
I have no problem.
Cool, alright, thank you.
Yeah.
And that's all I have.
Your unanimous decision from the board.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Leo, I actually have a picture of my mother in the Montalona schoolhouse with our whole family in it down there.
Really?
Yeah, I was gonna um, I only have one art living, and I was gonna make her um notify, you know, some of the Luska boys and stuff are in it as well, so I'm gonna try and bring you a copy of that, because uh it's the only picture I have of my family.
Gee, oh, that's the only picture you have of that? I mean, of, of your family in the area.
In, in that schoolhouse, in the Montalona schoolhouse with the teacher in, in the picture.
Where did that school go to now?
Where did the school go to?
Yeah.
I think it rotted, I don't know if that.
Is that the one that Mike Correa had on his lot, that was four down?
That was owned down by J Drive.
By J Drive.
The second entrance of J Drive, when they put that entrance, and I'm not sure why we let them, but they took that building down, and they put the road right there. That's right where the building was, right there where the roadway is.
You know, when we were kids, we used to go in that all the time, you know?
See, people, you know, I don't know if anybody historically was aware of that when they put that development in, but they knocked that building down.
Oh, see, I wondered where it went to, because.
Yeah, the front step at Jan's house is the step from the school.
Oh, okay.
I don't know.
I think that was done before anybody was asked about the developing, you know, get rid of it, nobody's gonna bring it up.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Okay, let's, let's wrap it up.
Yeah, okay. Alright, thank you.
Alright.
Daddy?
Yes, it's you.
Just for you, Leo, you may wanna um stop over and see me. I have a whole thing about the Snow Flight newspaper. I also have on my bulletin board there, an old um playboard for the something, some type of play they had.
The, the, oh, yeah, that's from the fellow who used to live there.
Vales.
Elwell?
No, it was before him. Yeah, the fellow who's lived there before him, his son was into ballet.
Right, I think that's what it was.
Tom uh.
But if, if you'd like to come by, you can, you can have that little poster, and if you want, you can take that whole thing about the snowflake and have, make a copy.
Yeah, see, he directed us in a Cinderella play in nineteen eighty-one.
Yeah.
The Friday night Cinderella play.
I think it, I think it may be even older than that, than what I have. I'll have to look at it and let you know.
I worked for the old guy, and he showed me all these pictures. Then he told me it was his son.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna go to a non-public now. Take the moment, request for.